...present themselves and that I think will resonate.
I agree with Jerry, I think we've done a pretty good job in the long term, Patchwork Theater, of course, you know, attracted people to come what we have going on, uh, give you an angle of view. People that are here. Okay. Is that without even mentioning?
Five years ago. And, uh, yeah, go on.
Mark Siegel of Blum, and this is probably revealed while we're talking about it. I talked to Mr. Ferb, I talked to Jack, I talked to Lori. They'll come back to me. Try to tech truck, there's a guy working on the thing, I get here at seven, it's filled. You can't, I don't know who you can talk to.
Uh, we'll take care of it.
Well, thank you, free kick.
We, I got back, did.
No, you said you were going to talk, you tried to talk to someone.
Oh, I did, I spoke to Robert Scialzo. I didn't call you back?
No, no.
Oh, I called you before I spoke to Robert.
But they're still doing it, they're still, you know.
Yeah, that's what they're doing. I'm sorry, Mark, I, I thought I got back to you. Um, I spoke to Robert Scialzo, and I can't believe I didn't call you, I'm so sorry.
You might have, not me, forgot.
Yeah, one of us.
Yeah.
Um, and he's, he's gonna talk, he, that day, he was gonna talk to his guys, but what they're trying to do is they're, they're trying to rent the space behind Barbeville.
Oh, good, that's right, so it'd be a great place for them.
Did he tell you that?
No, that'd be a great place, I, I would do that.
Yes.
Why can't they park there?
Can't leave. Um, yeah, that's, that's a big idea, just trying to get that.
Oh, good, alright.
But prior to that, they're gonna talk to the guys and tell them not to park there.
Okay, if it parks back by the church.
Yeah.
I'll park back there, I do, when I do wrong.
No, I'll tell them to park all the way by the congregation, okay, I'm sorry, Mark.
Thank you, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and trustees, Richard Kemp, man's here in the Patchwork Theater. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to comment on the Patchwork Theater and the roof, uh, project. And, uh, I have some questions regarding that, uh, project. I believe that, uh, when that building was, um, obtained by the Village of Patchwork, that there was a rubber roof installed with a manufacturer's warranty. And is that what they intend to replace?
Yes.
Okay, and?
Pretty soon. Oh, yes, well, I don't know. Like, you don't get, you say that, but I know that there are three sections to that roof. Right. I will find out that, now, now that you say it, let me check the details tomorrow.
Because warranties are prograded. In other words, if it's a thirty-year warranty and there's ten years left...
No, a little just question, because if you don't, I didn't ask you anything.
Okay, I'd also like to comment that when the rubber roof was installed, I know that it had to be inspected by a, somebody from the manufacturer, and later on, it came out, they want to add, to have their flashing replaced. So, from my point of view, as, as a roofing contractor, every job that I did, I had to look at the entire roof, because water does not stop at shingles. You have to look at flashing, you have to look at vents, skylights, anywhere water can get in, it will go for that. So, just replacing the roof and not replacing the flashing is not a very good job, if, if part of it is falling apart.
Right.
So, you have to look at the entire picture, not just a certain part.
You know, you said it, I know that at the end of this, this job, when it was done, there was a lawsuit that was a hundred and ten thousand at the time, and I think that the village refused to pay the guy because it was a shoddy job, and it was, and we needed to pay eight thousand dollars. But that being said, what you're saying is this building should have been a warranty audit given?
The manufacturer inspected it, and I believe it should be part of the minutes somewhere. But that's my recollection.
No, you're, you're probably correct, you're probably correct.
Okay, I'd also like to comment about these parking meters, these muni meters, and I've left many, many, uh, comments on the Patchwork Patch about these muni meters, and I've had experience with these meters in Manhattan and also in Stanford, Connecticut. These are, in my opinion, about one of the worst parking meters that is going, because even though one, uh, machine may handle twenty spaces, if twenty people pull up at the same time, there will be a line of twenty people standing there, in the rain, the snow, or whatever. That's one, that's one aspect. Then they have to fish around for change, so, you know, you have people standing there waiting to, uh, get up to the machine, so that's, that's a big drawback. Now, I don't know if they, they have a way to use cell phones or the payday there, but these...
Yeah, there's multiple payments, you can pay by cellphone. There's also, in each lot, uh, there's multiple machines, it's not just one machine in a parking lot, there's, uh, on Main Street, a machine, I think it's every eight spaces are, have a, have a muni, about every, every eight, I think less than ten spaces, there's a machine. So, you know, either way, to, and of course, you know, uh, if there's an event somewhere, say at the Emporium, and it starts at one time, you can get people to line up to pay for a machine.
Well, you know, if you have a downpour, like we had a day or two ago, you have eight people lined up.
They're gonna get wet.
Right, right. It's something that you all should have thought about and looked at before the Don Dier was made with the muni meters.
Well, those things are like that.
So, so this is...
The, the thing that we didn't consider, you know, that rain is gonna fall on people, the snow and things like that, I mean, but it's, you know, it's, wherever you go, these things exist, and they're not underneath big...
There are other, many other, many other meters.
Look, what kind would you recommend?
Oh, there, the Village of Badlem has a parking meter.
And it's stored.
Correct, so...
If we did it one time.
And they also have a built-in flashing light, so that when the meter expires, there's a light that starts flashing, and the person who drives around in a car, um, if they see a flashing light, they can write on the ticket.
See, with our system, you don't have to do that, we do it on, on laptops and...
Alright, now, my experience with these muni meters...
Your experience as a user of the muni meter?
Right.
As a administrator of the muni meter.
Okay, the one that I ran into in Manhattan, a muni meter, you had to put coins in, and it spit out a paper receipt.
Correct.
You had to put the paper receipt inside your vehicle, and it had to phase out, so in other words, you have, you, you're gonna have to have, um, meter readers on foot.
These don't need that, you just want the, the, the receipt in the car, but they can bring it in your pocket. The enforcement officer has a laptop that presses a button, basically, and it shows him which, which spaces are expired, and he goes directly to the space, and then he'll look at them.
Okay, well, that's, that's a little, little...
It's much more efficient way to do it, for the officer and the person who uses the machine. And so it's also...
Yeah. Alright, I'd also like to comment, uh, as trustees, I, I still believe that when it comes to a report of the Patchwork Theater, that some kind of financial, uh, statement should be made. They're doing well.
You have to talk to the theater board about that. They, they did, they did a, they did a...
What was the presentation, Paul?
A presentation a few months ago, here at the Village of...
Okay, may I ask, you got four million dollar bond, uh, what, what is the status of that?
It's another two years, three years?
Uh, two seventeen.
Is, is that an open-end bond or a fixed?
Fixed, no, it's fixed, and it will be paid down in June of seventeen.
Well, if it were an open-end bond, and the Patchwork Theater is doing as great as it's, wouldn't that be a better option?
Well, it, it is. Saying the Patchwork Theater is doing great, um, what I'm saying, what I'm not saying is that they're making tons of money, because they don't make tons of money, and finding any theater that's not backed by a huge corporate entity that's making money, and you're not gonna find it yet. You gotta figure, twelve years ago, they were in debt for...
Twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-seven. When we came into office, they were scrambling for twenty-seven thousand, they were in a hole.
Yeah, for many, two hundred, hundreds of thousands of dollars, basically, they dug themselves out of the hole, and they're at the place where they are now. It's not a money-making entity, it can't be, it just, it's...
As a taxpayer.
As a taxpayer, why, as a taxpayer, you should talk to the theater board, they are the ones who, they're, they're a separate board than us.
Well...
They're not us, and they do a presentation every year, and last year, this year recently, they gave a presentation on their financial status.
They cover all their operating expenses?
Yeah, it is our building, so we, we cover the capital expenses, a roof, eventually seats, but they cover the apparel, they cover the utilities, they cover dental repairs, and the only money that we put in is to pay that, to pay down that bond.
What, what I'm saying as a taxpayer, looking at a fixed rate bond versus an open-end bond, where if it's paid off early, it's gonna, gonna pay, it's gonna take less, less money to pay it off, which will be less on my tax bill. So, from that, from that aspect, I have a right to make a comment.
No, no, that, that, you're, you're correct. If we had the funds to do it, that would not create a tax increase in a year that you do it. If you figure that we probably owe three years, like, maybe about a million dollars, for us to pay that down now, are we just gonna...
Unless we, bonds are issued, kept, they're issued with fixed rates and fixed call dates and fixed maturity dates, and if you exercise those calls, usually they're paid as premiums, so actually retire that debt, it would end up costing the village more money than paying it off, the way we're going with that. So, you can't pay it off early unless you're gonna pay a premium for the bond, so just, there's a fixed maturity date to it.
Thank you, thanks, Jerry.
Alright, uh, I have a complaint regarding a, a neighbor. Uh, there has been a, a fence constructed, um, there are weeds, there is debris on the front lawn, I have been looking at this from June.
What's that mean?
I've spoken with Joe Brandy, uh, with the building department, and he tells me, well, there's a court date set up, so on and so forth, and nothing, things, uh, there's a motorcycle sitting on the front sidewalk, front of the house, three Thorn Street.
Three?
Three, yes, this, this was where, where one of your code enforcement employees came from, Matthew Flower.
Is this the work class, actually?
No, I don't, I don't believe so.
Was there a violation issued on this property?
Uh, you'll have to ask, um, Joe, uh...
Mr. Brandy, say that there was a court date pending?
Yes, he did.
We'll check in.
Alright, alright.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm the owner of St. George and I'm West Avenue.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Denise Bryan.
Denise Bryan, Theodore Bryan?
Yeah. Um, I'm here, I have a petition against Stephen Moore. I believe you had just walked past my house yesterday on West Avenue with, um, the owner of the old house.
Yeah.
Steve, the one that has the house that's falling apart on West Avenue, his house is really bad, to the point that we have...
Is that the red house?
Yeah, yes.
Cat house, yeah.
Yes, okay, um, it's, it's tarred, it, I, I'm there eleven years, and it's just been getting worse and worse and worse. The house that's coming, the deck next door, he owns also, it's two forty-three West Avenue.
Who's, who's your landlord?
Yes, I live there for two years.
And your neighbors?
Carlene has me. I lived there for a period of two years, and in that two years, that house has become a dilapidated mess. Uh, it is, it is becoming to the point where it is, his, his own house, it, it's just become such a mess. The foundation has a hole in it that leaks water, the, the roof is torn off half of it from sandy, and he has not repaired it.
His tarp's a roof incendiary box holding it down.
That is what has, has, uh, has forced me to leave that house.
I think somebody was there today, because I went, came in on Friday, and I had complained about it. Um, it's, it's also the heating, he has his own bathroom.
He himself, he himself, in his own house, does not have heating or running water or anything. He, he's his house with propane gas, and it is a, a fire hazard to all.
What's the address?
Yes, it's two forty, uh, two forty-seven and two forty-three, West Avenue. He also, on the property, leaves his cesspool open to aerate the cesspool, but it is a danger to children and animals, we all know, that is, that is a danger.
But now he's having the guy that lives on, in Cedar Avenue, that red house, he wants to move in, he wants to move in now, to his house. Yeah. And he's moving his stuff in as we speak, now, and it just, you live across the street from me, I, you know, so you know, I...
And I have, also, just for the record, I have had electricians and plumbers in two forty-three West Avenue, and they have both told me that they are, um, out, the, the elect, electrical system in two forty-three West Avenue is outdated and not up to code, especially for the Village of Patchwork. That is what I told, what I was told by the Village of Patchwork, built up in the...
I mean, I've been there a long time, it, it's, I really never, you know, I said, okay, block has one, but it's going way beyond, and now I'm having this other guy coming in, and I don't want it.
And there is also boarding tabs.
Oh, and...
And he refuses to have me spade a new order.
I have a list here, if you'd like it.
Okay. Okay.
And you know, I, I have a lot most interest, but I, it took me a little while to write the prescription out myself, so, um, I got, and so, and, yeah, thank you so much.
And also, many times, I've been a, a nuisance to the patrons of, um...
Oh, with machetes.
With machetes, with machetes, and wrecking people's vehicles when they park in front of this, and in front of this house.
You know, I've, I've, like, you know, I've gone by and I've seen it from, with that distance, yeah.
Have you been there when he was awake? Yeah, that, that's a big difference. So, like, he sleeps late, and then he's out, and it's...
And he is a nuisance.
And then, and seriously, like, the heat and, you know, having propane to even your house is not safe right now.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, bye.
Good evening, how you doing? My name's Barry Burrow, two nineteen West Avenue. Yeah, I'm glad I got here early. What's your?
My, your last name, Paul?
Burrow, B-U-R-R-E, who else? Yeah, I've been here since the beginning, and I'm glad you borrowed the, rather, the house. Well, I, I'm not sure, when you guys have dislaid it and knocked the house down, or whatever, made it clean up, and also the house next door, alright, I don't know the whole history about that, but that house got damaged too, from the heat of the other house.
It was in south of New York.
To the, uh, well...
South of the south.
Okay, thank you. And, uh, like, you probably, my house is up for sale, and, uh, also, the same thing, I came down here to support the people that are just up here, it's really a eyesore, West Avenue really is sad, it really is. I know you guys, I was away, I have a house out, out of state, and I've gone for nine weeks, and we came back, and I, uh, I'm, I'm a little satisfied, I would say, that you guys helped out and cleaned up a little bit, two, two-eleven, the house of all the tents.
Right.
The greenhouse, two houses away from me, but, uh, it, it, the tents, they, now they got brand new tents again, alright, so they, I mean...
Two-eleven.
Two-eleven, greenhouse, that's two homes away from it, uh, cars there, gang, this, that, it's like a waterhouse. It, it's sad. I got, uh, two different real estates in my home, so it's not just one, one, uh, opinion in saying, guess what, we've got a beautiful home, you sold my home, and stuff, and, uh, we're having a hard time selling your house because of the area. That's sad, I'm here fifteen, sixteen years and not...
If you're blocking it for water.
Well, but it's just, it's just the whole idea, and you're talking about seeing a movie the other day, I'm, I'm, we saw it on Twenty Twenty, about Angry Neighbors, I tell you, I hope you saw that movie. Well, I tell you, man, if my, my, I brought a bulldozer, I'll be in the next Twenty Twenty. That's how frustrated I am right now. I wanna sell my house, make a profit, I, I wanna be another people, say, you say I'm getting them off you already, that, that, say I'm proud of you here, that I came from Patchwork, and I'm here, and I spent a lot of money to be here, I'm proud, but it really hurts us, that, uh, that people say at this point, you never need your money, you never need to sell this place, really kills me, you know, and I, I wish you could look into that firehouse, the house next door, that cat man do, that, that two swarm over there, it's really sad, it's really sad, you know what I mean? You know?
The opportunity.
Please, please do, thank you, I appreciate it, why don't you build your own house, it'll take a little time.
If, if, if I could ask Attorney Egan to say a little, you know, we don't either stand by and watch this stuff.
Right.
I mean, the Passalacque House could be a movie.
Is that greenhouse?
At the corner of Cedar Main Lane.
Oh, yeah.
The village has pretty, a decade...
Oh, you can see a house, we're talking about.
Yeah, I mean, for a decade.
Right.
He would rather it be forty years.
No, I, I know the man a long time, Ben, so...
As he's, he's moved in our block.
He, he would rather be caucery. And it's difficult to control somebody.
Well, then, then, we should go and put away another house, because it's not safe to get out, him and the guy next door.
I can tell you about the firehouse too, we are prepared on that. The firehouse to, um, take it as a village, there are certain procedures we have to follow. They ask insurance, there's tax issues, we want, we would, if we had a right, the mayor would have done it yesterday. He can't, because there are certain procedures have to be followed. Along that same line, October twenty eighth, the next meeting, we're gonna change our code with regard to boarding up, and then ultimately tearing down these kinda houses, so it's gonna take a little bit of time, but we can, as a government, go in and rush in and knock somebody's house down, because there's an argument, terrible, and how much of it was damaged, and all those kinda things, so we're, we're aware of it, we're on it, we're actually making changes in the law, even speed it up even faster, but it's gonna take a little bit of time, so just bear with us.
Also, the house is directly across the street from me, I know you guys watched the house a lot, a lot of people living in there, you know, the corner house, the old house, it's filled again. I put complaints that I called up with numerous times, they got dogs blocking at nine o'clock, we take it. The village guys came and stuff, heard the dogs, and, and knocked their door, and it, it's, it's a quality of life issue, it's getting sad, it's, you know what I mean? They just, it's a quality of life issue, you know, and now it's becoming a money issue, you know what I mean, with, you know, it's, it's really touching home at my house, anyway, you know, and I got too much free time on my hands, I'm home.
I did your job.
I'm not a volunteer, I'm doing it on my own.
Very happy. You want my shotgun?
Dennis Ross, thirty-two West Main Street, you know, very long time, you know that passion, there might be a problem, it's going on in the block, it's early. The ten-hour work class, I talked about earlier, the cost of that, that's, come back to your comp, on comp, that, at the beginning, trustee, can you talk about the ten-hour work class you're gonna do for the employees? Did that cost, and the cost it has, come back from your workers' comp, that's, have some rest of us, and we, and it's a very good class, and I'm, all the employees should have that, all the village guys out there working, it's got a four-year lifespan.
So, workers' comp with the community, the village?
Yeah, the village on that.
Who, the village's their own business?
Now, it, it, you know, it took us years to get a, a proven trainer for that, of course, it's, you know, just spend the time and money that we, we had to do to get an instructor in-house, it was, it was crazy, and then, you know, thousands of dollars to travel to Washington, but where do you keep supplies, before you make the instructor? I, unless somebody's gonna volunteer a lot of that time and effort for that, it's, you're much farther ahead of bringing a instructor in, and I have some money, it was like a few minutes, that's helping a lot of, a lot of the comp actors, um, at this point, um, and more bicycles on Main Street, to Mr. Egan, they always, they're done up on the sidewalk.
Well, we're looking to put them actually in, um, the road walkway, theater walkway, you know, and, and the, the racks themselves are not, you know, four or five, they're actually just put one bike on the other side of it, so if you put, or three or four of them, and you could, you could rack six or eight bikes.
I think the bicycles that are on the sidewalks on Main Street are, see the number of pedestrians on the main states, and trying to...
Well, we don't have racks on Main Street currently.
I'm sorry?
We don't have racks on the main street?
Uh, no, they're on every tree, like...
So, then, rather than on the tree, they'll hopefully be on a rack, in, in more walkways. Off Main Street, but in the...
Well, there's some sort of way we can remove some of them, would be, because they really feel a lot of, foot traffic is coming.
Talking about ridden bikes or?
Both, both, ridden bikes.
Where are the bikes, chained up on one sidewalk?
Pick a restaurant?
Well, it's, 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 it's code, it's gonna allow, like, in every move, I mean, it's, that, you know, if you see a bike chained to a, a tree, or a telephone pole, or you're kind of on a, a sidewalk, you know, walk up for it, they'll just take, take it off and put it someplace, uh, long down.
Did not, no, that was, thank you.
Go ahead.
The liquor store application that Bank Seven-Eleven's trying to put through, is that the application, Ben?
They've, I think they've pulled it, and they have certain things they have to do first, before they can, you submit it.
And that has to go, eventually, at some point, it has to come to the village, correct?
Well, that's for public hearing. Well, that's, that's why they have to pull it, because part of their application is you have appropriate approvals from the local municipality, and they had no approvals for us, so they had to pull their application. But that's gotta come before zoning and planning, and we had to subdivision of the building, maybe even subdivision of property, depending upon what the S L A department's gonna be.
Probably know that the libraries there might, might want it.
Well, the, the letter I accepted, the S L A just indicated that, indicated two things, number one, that they did not have the, the appropriate approvals, and concerned and registered by local residents about, they're getting within about two hundred and fifty people, a, a library.
Library, yeah, they're trying to, they're trying to sell that in before the library's door opens. Okay, I saw your letter, thank you very much for that, that was quite, you know, what, what are you trying to run there? We got enough problems on the corner, but that would be a mighty pines to it, literally. Um, oh, the, um, it took the tree down and, sure parked him up, but that traffic flowed through there, what a difference that makes back there, that has helped us out tremendously getting in and out, I hope we can find the tree someplace else, but that, that island, the movement of that island was, I got success.
It's actually location for him to use.
Yeah, but I'm sure he was thinking, you know, less space to him, and taking it in with that tree. Okay, um, is there, any way we can get more trash cans on Main Street? I think that's a problem, you know, Mr. Williams fights a lot with cleaning the planters, is, there really isn't enough of them, and it's, this is, it's really sad to say, a lot of people don't understand, but the, the frequent hackers are, that they actually are trashy stephies, it's, you know, it's not a sad bunny there, but, um...
You know, I, I'm in the village quite a bit, I, I don't really have much trouble finding a trash can, you think it's just that people are lazy, even ten, forty trash cans on a block, they still throw their trash, or something like that?
I think they're not lazy as well as they should be.
Maybe it's the place...
You know, I, maybe it isn't the number, I think it's more of a placement issue, um, places with takeout services need to have one on both sides of the door, almost, it's, you know... Places with takeout services need to have one on both sides of the door almost, it's, you know, um, I think that, that could be more of a placement issue of the kids. Alright, I'm sorry, take your time.
Any other comments? Question two, second favorite? What do you have as I see?